Good morning. It's nine AM and I'll call the June eleventh meeting of the Floyd County Board of Supervisors to order. Our first item is approving the agenda. Someone approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Supervisor Jorgensen, seconded by Keeper to approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public comment, anyone listening on the phone that would like to make a public comment at this time? Very none, we'll move to item three, review action regarding approval of the May twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Make a motion to approve the May twenty nine, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'll second. We have a motion by Supervisor Keeper, seconded by Jorgensen to approve the minutes of the May twenty ninth meeting, further discussion. I'm asking if anyone listening on the phone? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Review action regarding approval of the claim. Make a motion to.
If you want to know, I didn't put it back. You do have one visa thing. He sent out to you.
Yeah, I read through that. Thank you. He just took care of it. He paid the county better.
He paid, similar to what others kept out, like what jumped in?
Not separate item in our.
No, so it just was covered under the claims card.
Motion to approve the claims as presented, including the visa sunset was taken care of.
I'll second.
All right, the motion has been made by Supervisor Jorgensen, seconded by Keeper to approve the claims as presented. Further discussion. Regarding that issue that you brought up, so in the past, we've had a warning to employees, let them know that that's not for, but policy wise, so I assume they should. Maybe that as well.
Would probably should.
Yes. I can motion, I can visit with him about that or as part of the motion.
It's been part of the motion, or you could do a separate motion when you got this one.
I'll, I can, I'll redo my motion. I'll make a motion to.
Or you can.
Yeah, I'll amend it. I'd like to amend my motion to approve the claims as presented. And also go a warning for Jesse Willenson.
Yes.
His use of a visa credit card.
Okay, the motion has been amended to a warning to Jesse Willenson for improper use of the credit card not providing a receipt for his meal at the time with submitted his claim.
Correct. Second, amended motion.
Those in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Item five, updates on various boards, commissions, and activities since our last meeting.
I had one commission meeting that I had to miss for a funeral yesterday, but it was with CTC. I did follow up with Jacob and Jacob acknowledged to me that the financials were on track, general repairs were discussed with some doors and that type of thing. I also had a call, my landowner regarding Drainage District Three. I see Tyler's on, but we'll probably get him involved later, I assume. I did talk with Tyler and Tyler assured me that there was some confusion as to when the project would be completed, when they were leaving. Tyler assured me that they weren't leaving and that the items that were discussed, they would continue to follow up on as they are now. Mission date was, the contract going off memory was September one. So he felt they were full on track that way. Other than that, I didn't have anything. I had a last meeting on the fourth. They went over their budget, they're renewing their insurance policies and there's a pretty healthy increase in some of their insurance, especially on equivalent to buy a new structure. So they talked about that and then on Friday, I was privileged to take part in motorcade that escorted the remains of Lieutenant Max Daly back home directly to Charleston. So that was an interesting and helpful experience.
It is up here.
Yep.
Thank you. I attended and acted on behalf of the county in the closing of the property we purchased from Steve Slater for the communication tower. And then I attended a other meeting with the zoning department staff and Audger Carr and John Robbins regarding the upcoming order of adjustment meeting where their county, what will the county be doing? Will be applying for a variance or a condition to use. So we made some decisions on that. And that is going to be set at the same date that the zoning commission, the same day that zoning condition will be meeting when they actually have their public hearing on the on the updates to the utility and battery storage.
Again, how's that date been?
Yes, twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
That first, the order of adjustments is nine AM and the zoning commission is six PM.
And then after I decided to call up, well, I got a call from a member of the the advisory committee asking me, was there anything going on in EMS?
Oh. I was going to touch on that.
Go ahead.
I did talk recently with Jared Keith, Keith Starr. That was my interpretation that you met with Steve Deers, I don't know if it was a person on telephone.
Yeah.
So there isn't any scheduled meetings at this time. EMS, the last EMS meeting they had was decided to schedule their EMS meeting after the ambulance commission met. Well, the ambulance commission hasn't met, so. Oh. It's kind of out there, but there's a according to Keith Starr, the numbers are kind of what they are. They're still they've gotten reviewed, but they're still under that process too. And he did tell me that he wanted to visit with you. He was going to try to reach you sometime after three o'clock today. So I don't know if that'll happen or not. That's about all I can add to that.
All right. Yeah, I was I went after Dennis had mentioned that he'd seen the cash flow, the detailed cash flow, I was wondering if I could when they were going to show it to me. I was, I don't know, have you seen it or not?
Haven't fully seen it. I seen it a couple of months ago at the last name, last commission meeting. It changes since.
So so I did have that conversation. I left a message for Keith Starr last week, but perhaps I'll hear him today with regard to that to see that. And so I also, as I mentioned at our last meeting, I've been visiting with Harry Creedley, who is the person from AMR about extending the contract. See what, see if they have any interest in doing that or how that might work. And so it sounded like he was talking to people, Zaysh and other higher ups, everyone on that. They may have an offer and an offer to his city, the county for extending that. That could happen by the end of this week. So we'll see where all this is going. Been some time now since Patrick Holmey resigned and you know, they had a recommendation that night and they were going to present it to the board and then all this kind of got in there. So you know, it's worth to keep this initiative moving. So I may or may not be able, I might not be able to attend their groundbreaking ceremonies after that. So I remember birthday and so we had some plans. So I hope that maybe I could see somebody there, but I might not be going to that, but I don't know.
I'm trying to be there.
There's certainly something to get this on the ballot, whatever it is.
I think renewing a contractor, the AMR certainly might be the most viable. The only thing that would the funding from the GEMT would not be available in that process. Other than that, you know, it's still dollars.
Hopefully they will have some access to that maybe by our. And that's the extended line. Item six, review action regarding Drainage District Number Three, main open ditch repair pay request number seven.
Tyler is on so that he could just provide an update to us as well.
Tyler, we're just reviewing the progress and work in Drainage District Three. And we're actually talking about a paint ditch repair pay request. So give us an update on the work in the project, if you would please.
Yes, good morning, all. As Supervisor Jorgensen had touched on, there was a conversation at the, with a landowner along that open ditch. Progress is, I'll say to start, progress is going along smoothly. The the work's all being completed as it is specified to be completed. The, what the compute, what the confusion stemmed from is that the contractor is focusing on completing the bulk of the excavation work and then they will go back through and level the spoil banks and do their finished cleanup work. The reason they do that is because when you pull a lot of that spoil material out of the bottoms, it's very, very wet and it's a silty clay material that likes to hold on to a lot of that water. And if you don't give it time to dry out, when you push it around, you track mud all over the place and you make a bigger mess than, and then you find yourself doing it again. So they like to start at the bottom end, the downstream end, do all of the excavation work, well, after the tree clearing. And so then there's, you've got your tree roots and, and branches and things that until that cleanup work happens, sits in the right of way. So then they, they track up doing their excavation and then they'll move back to the start of the project and level everything out. So a landowner could see equipment go past and then not see them for a while and think that they have left and think that what's out in front of them is it. That's not, that's not the case. I've spoken with the contractor, mostly just as project coordination, but they've assured me they are on this project until it is done. So they haven't mowed their equipment off. They haven't loaded up and gone to different job sites. And if they have for any short period of time, it's not, it's in no way a reflection that the project is completed. Additionally, there was a request from that landowner to check the activeness of a tile system entering into the ditch. That was reviewed and it found that the twenty-four inch that the pattern tiling is leading to is flowing free and unobstructed. It may need some riprap revetment to keep the scouring from where the water is coming into the ditch from continuing, but that is something that is specked in the project and there is quantity to account for that. As far as the field was concerned, the pattern tiling is working and it was dry. So that was, that was the good update there. The last thing I'll say is that because of the, the completion date on this is September thirtieth and because of the staging and the way that the project goes with the spoil banks not being leveled out and the, the branches and tree roots not being cleaned up until finish work at the end, there was not ever an anticipation that those spoil banks would be farmable this year, especially in the areas where there was heavy significant tree cover. I think some landowners were excited and I would be too, to see a bit more ground that they are by code have full beneficial use of. However, during a repair project, the district does have the right to be in there. It is the district's right of way. And I am sorry if any landowner had the anticipation that that ground would be farmable yet this year, but that won't be the case. Every year after, they'll have the full beneficial use of that. The district won't have the, as long as they're not putting permanent structures there, they can farm it, get those extra rows, just not this year. We do still track the damaged areas, areas that in any other year would have been planted and farmed. We of course, track all the crop that is run down and those damage amounts, we submit with our completion report. And that's then for discussion by the landowners and consideration by the trustees for compensation. Anything outside the right of ways, the code says shall be considered for compensation. Anything within the right of ways, that's of course, up for discussion and consideration by the trustees. I've always held the argument that the landowners don't have control over when these projects happen and they do have the full beneficial use. So it is worth considering at least a portion of those damages be paid for crops. However, I, I'm less sympathetic to considering damages for crops in areas where the district spent the money to remove trees, where landowners would not have been able to plant crops to begin with. If that, if that makes sense. Because the, the landowners aren't truly out a crop that they wouldn't have been able to, to plant. But ultimately that is a trustee's decision. I'm just tipping my hand a little bit as to what my recommendation on that would be. But that is all to say that the contractor is not done. No one is considering what is out there now, finished work. I am considering it good progress and the pay application reflects what they have completed to date. Any questions on, on that, how it's progressing or anything else that has been heard from landowners? Elsewise, what I've heard from landowners has been pretty overwhelmingly positive. There's been a significant drop in water level throughout the facility and it's it's much tamer than it was. It was pretty wild out there when we began and it's, it's fallen much more in line with what an open ditch facility should and can look like.
I just had a question from a member in the Drainage District. I don't know, if you call it south of the east side, basically by Ocean Avenue where the ditch is no longer becomes Drainage District Three, just upstream from that, there's a real nice grove of pine trees that's really nicely taken care of. And the Drainage District member asked me if them trees were in the right of way. And I didn't have an answer for that. Is if you know where I'm talking about?
I, I think I do. I'm hesitant to say definitely. But what I would say is that if they still stand now and they're at the downstream end, I would feel rather confident that they will remain to stand. The, the bulk, I, I mean, we've, we've, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've paid one hundred percent of the tree removal pricing on the pay applications, if I remember correctly. Which would imply then that that work has been completed. We also would have had that right of way staked out. So if there were laugh out there and anything that's outside of that will stay.
It's fifty feet from the center of the creek on each side. Is that what it is?
Correct. Yep.
Just in my visual from the road, I would have figured that was probably fifty feet. So then they're out of the right of way in my, my visual.
Also, well maintained, purposefully planted, far enough back trees that we are able to work around. I have always been more than fair as far as consideration for, for the leaving of those. The, the big thing is that trees can't be diverting water liable to fall into the creek, causing either damage from falling or from their continued existence after they fall. And we have to be able to traverse those right of ways to get to the facility. As long as those criteria are met, some exceptions can be made. I'm not saying significance or that we'd, we'd really be excited about the possibility of leaving entire groves along, you know, within, well within that, but yeah, that, that's a very long winded answer of saying that if they're still standing, they will continue to stand.
I think that answers my question. Thank you.
And yes, I, I brought the pay application back up here. We are, we have recommended one hundred percent of the, of the tree removal payment.
Is there any questions, comments on what Tyler has told the trustees regarding this pay application? So is there a, a motion to approve what is called pay app number seven for work done from the first of April through the thirty-first of May of twenty twenty-four?
I'll second.
I'll second. All right. It's been moved by Supervisor Keeper and seconded by Jorgensen to approve pay app seven for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. For work done for the tree removal of Drainage District Three.
Okay. Hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred. Or excuse, I'm sorry, nineteen thousand eight hundred. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, further discussion? There are none. Those, any comments if anyone listening on the phone line? Any member of the Drainage District like to comment? There are none. Those in favor of the motion to pay app number seven for Floyd County Drainage District Number Three and about nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars? Say aye.
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 Motion is carried.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
And moving along and we're talking about the Drainage District Four in assessment.
Yeah. There was a plug tile, a tile that had tree roots in it in Drainage District Four. It is a ten inch lateral just east of Shadow Avenue, north of Charleston. The crew found where the tile was plugged and removed the, the plug portion of the tile and replaced it. Nothing, nothing major.
Do you tally the rule that I cracked in?
And this one, just for your information, it's for the one thousand two hundred fifty dollars and fifty four cents. But that fund does have seven hundred eight dollars and fifty cents. You wouldn't have to do an assessment unless you wanted to have a little bit more money in that fund or wait until another project to.
How much is that?
One thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents. But it'd still be about five hundred, less than five hundred.
People say we're in, I, I think so.
Yeah.
When the time comes. I'll make a motion to, to the Work Order eighteen thirty-eight, Drainage District Number Four Repair and Assessment. And no assessment now is needed.
I'll second. All right. We have a motion by Supervisor Keeper and seconded by Jorgensen to approve the Drainage District Four Repair and Assessment amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Further discussion? Comments, anyone listening on the phone? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Aye. Review action regarding repairs is to be done in Washington watershed priority here one.
We had a report from Ryan Schrader that there's a hole over a tile north of Charleston in Washington watershed priority one, just south of Timber Ave. It's not very far from here. So that should be another mortgage, you know, I assume a mortgage.
I'm just looking for the approval to go ahead and get that one done.
I have a question. This is a different issue. We had a, a landowner in that district complain about terraces where the drainage intakes were gone or missing. And the water was going over the terraces. I think that I think the landowner is going to try to talk to the tenant, see if they can do something about it, but normally they have those orange intakes and maybe they replaced them with something different.
They got replaced. We, we did a work order a couple of months ago where we replaced intakes that I'm not sure if it just looks different. I know we relocated some of them as well closer to the edge of the terrace, so if we could. So that way there's more vacant farm easier in that area. So I don't know, there's visually not seeing them.
They took that upright too.
I thought we were replacing them with upright intakes because we didn't want to switch the French drains. That's what the Nate Stoffer had come in. I think, was that three months ago, maybe? Me and him were sitting over there. He, he had wanted, he'd asked if we could do French drains there and my road superintendent had thought that that would cause those to actually get clogged more often. My uh road superintendent had thought that that would cause those to actually get clogged more often than than not operated. So we kept the stand pipes. The stand intakes, uh but maybe they look visually look different. I haven't gone out and looked at them or anything. Uh but they should be there as far as I know.
Sometime if you have an opportunity here in that area, people see it.
Yeah.
I may have missed them, but I couldn't see anything.
Okay.
I wonder if it's the same area.
Oh, I guess there would be difference, yeah.
Is it the same one? No, we're talking about the same thing then.
It might be like, I don't know if it's the same area as where you did the work. I thought maybe it was a different area.
Oh, okay.
But I'm not sure.
It could be, oh.
Uh this would be northeast of where I live, around the corner.
Yep, that's right. Where where timber starts to go north. There where timber goes, it goes back east on the hundred eightieth there, up in that area.
Okay. Or goes east a couple of times.
Still, yeah, yep, yep.
Right up in in.
I can look into that and see what uh.
Thanks.
Yep.
Should we still unanimate it?
Yes, we do. Have take any action to approve those repairs. Hearing one. Second. Alright, there's been a motion made by supervisor keeper or second by Jorgensen to approve the repairs. To the uh loophole in uh major street two. Priority Washington watershed uh priority area number one.
And just for clarification, this is two direct secondary roads to two hundred.
Yes. Um. Further discussion? The comments, anyone listening on the phone? There are none goes in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Alright, uh item nine, update on communications. Um. Page. Okay, good. We've got a change order. That uh we have previously approved. Six thousand seventeen dollars for motor motorola to run that line. And at the time, I know that discussion was, we thought that was uh could be pretty excessive, but uh. We went ahead and proved that I uh but then. Um. We have a bid. Um. Yes, period of that um. Eighteen hundred sixty dollars. If I recall that discussion, there's. We thought there might be something additional to that in that original bid, but uh. Actually was. So uh obviously that work hasn't been done. Uh and the the bid is a lot less than. We originally thought and proved. So what we're doing here in the first part of this, we're considering rescinding. Uh the motion made in our May twenty ninth meeting. Approving. This Motorola's change order. Um. Run this kind of this this wire. From the one room to the other room that these offices. Um and then take action on this lower quote. Um. Describe it back.
I believe you did. Make a motion to rescind the motion made on May twenty ninth regarding the approval of Motorola's solutions change order. Number three for electrical line generator room to the radio equipment room in order to have power source. To add the split to H, the split unit HVAC system at Charleston City Hall.
I'll second. Alright, we have a motion by supervisor Jorgensen, second by keeper to approve to send the motion made on twenty ninth. Uh to Motorola's solutions in that change order. Discussion. So what happened? We then we have a new change order. Motorola, that's just, we just don't pay the second door.
This is actually outside of Motorola's scope of work, but because they were doing other electrical work there, they said they could. Change order was what that was originally that they had their people quoted and uh and then we did have a meeting. Our Wednesday meeting was that afternoon of the May twenty ninth meeting and uh. Uh feel like everything is appropriate with Perry Novak contract that everything is covered that needs to be covered. We got clarification from Lynn that. Um. Could be any issues with. Having Perry Novak to work. So John Gore has reviewed it as well and it looks like everything is covered that needs to be covered with that, when he's saying.
Alright, so first part of this is rescinding our motion. Uh and we have a motion second. Thank you for the discussion. Uh. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Motion's carried. The second part is. Approval of that quote from Perry Novak and getting. Um so what we're considering is a quote for one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars.
I'll make a motion to. Prove the quote from Perry Novak for electrical line from the generator room to the regular building room. In order to have a power source, they had to split the unit HVAC system at Charleston City City Hall.
Second. Alright, we have a motion by keeper, second by Jorgensen. To approve the quote from Perry Novak for one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars for electrical work to be done at the uh City Hall. Further discussion? Comments if anyone listening on the phone? There are none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Alright, now review action. See, let us see, review action regarding approval of Motorola's updated site location plan for tower with sixty five foot by sixty five foot. Room for future expansion. There's a guy in the packet that shows this.
Can I speak on that?
Oh, sure.
Um. So the first part you have in your packet is what was provided as change order number four for Motorola. Um to make that. Go from the sixty five by sixty five to sixty five by ninety foot. Is that pay up? Are they change order number four? If you have that, this part right here, so is that would cost twenty seven thousand four hundred and thirty three dollars. So at that same discussion on May twenty ninth, that afternoon meeting. Um that was talked about Motorola revised to the plans. Um to sixty five by sixty five. But with an expansion allowance, if down the road, we do have leases for space on the tower. Then that area could be modified as it needed to be to expand to the west um to capture that additional. Sixty five to ninety five, uh ninety five feet area. So it leaves it open rather than doing the work now, the design of the. Where the tower sits will allow for expansion if need to be at a later time rather than spending the twenty seven thousand. So no lease tower space for that. So if your option would be, you could either approve this twenty seven thousand if you wanted the sixty five by ninety. Through this change order for if you wanted to, if you want that additional uh footage. Uh but if you want to not do that. Then you can approve these new design plans. The consensus of the committee, uh uh which would have been Ben and Jason, Dennis. Uh myself was, let's go back to the sixty five by sixty five.
Save the money. And if we need it in the future, you know, address it then or whoever. We, is the twenty seven thousand seem like a lot of money for about fifty foot fence, is what I. Anyway, that's reasonable, that's.
Just a question, I don't know anything about this, but if there is some that goes on the tower. The additional equipment, right? So why do they need to increase the?
Well, there's there's some equipment boxes where their cables come into and maybe they can hang on the fence that's already there, but if they. Or if they needed to erect a small building of some kind. Where the sixty five to sixty five may not accommodate that, so that was the reasoning, right, for you to expand it twenty five foot.
That that thought was that. If somebody, if there's people who want to go on that tower, maybe they put some of that cost in that expansion.
Oh, yeah.
We're talking the. Real estate, right? What will that be moored in the me or?
Be gravel, it'd be covered.
It'd be gravel, okay.
Plastic, gravel on top of it.
Well, a lot of the areas gonna have that rock because the way they did this part right here on your plans is that drive in. Drive in area, so it's gonna have a lot of the rock. Two feet that uh wouldn't have rock if they needed to expand. That can surround it. And I mean, it's begging me that they don't even need, maybe the expansion only needs to be a chunk over here and not the whole fence, you know? It's.
We're we're a long ways from renting anything out there, right? So. That was general consensus with people and back to the original.
So Motorola will just scrap this change order number four if you want to go, if you move to just go with this revised design plan. And they'll just use change order number four for a future and they'll just scrap it unless you want to do the twenty seven thousand dollars expansion.
I think we need to scrap that one. What am I?
Sounds reasonable.
Would you have to take any action to do?
Uh you would take an action to approve this site plan?
That's here, that's not the original one.
No, this is number three. So the third. Cause the first one was sixty five by ninety five. And it's set up north a little bit farther. And then the revised one they did with sixty five by ninety five or ninety.
One was right on the property line too, wasn't it?
The first one was right on the property line, yeah. Then they moved it over twenty five feet from the property line, but made it ninety four Y instead of sixty five foot wide. And this one just cut off still twenty five feet, a little bit of different configuration in here. And then just no fence on the west part. They. Twenty five feet, sixty five, sixty five to ninety feet. West is no fence, no additional rock except this. And this is, this rock here is included in the project because added that much.
So I need a motion to approve plans, change order number three, right? Site plan number three.
Yeah. Thirty five, yeah. I don't know that it's thirty five. Uh. Actually, it must have had some others that we didn't see, but it'd be uh. Uh maybe you just go by the date. It's dated June fifth, twenty twenty four.
Action dated June fifth, twenty twenty four. The tower with a sixty five to sixty five foot with road for future expansion.
Second. Alright, we have a motion by supervisor keeper, second by George to approve the new. Uh updated site location plan for the tower. Sixty five feet by sixty five feet with uh future expense. Further discussion? Anyone listening on the phone who'd like to comment on this issue? There are none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Item ten, in your packets, uh. Is. An invoice from um. Niocog for John Robbins services. Um. These are the services that he has provided to the counties upon our shepherd contract at sixty dollars an hour that he. Works on specific issues for us and also traveled on uh to Floyd County on that day of May twenty fourth. For the feasibility. So the total of this is three hundred seventy six dollars and sixty two cents. And this is. He's listed out what the item by bill is is for. This is separate from the work that he has contracted. Any discussion, comments on that?
I've got uh ten thousand block of armpit dollars, but that would be uh. For solar priority combination. So you think you, I would suggest you buy this with your armpit dollars and we could those armpit dollars used up right here. We're gonna have between this and dealers and credit bills for pipeline. We're gonna use up those armpit dollars and have to use them out of another fund, but. I really wanted to have our dollars managed by. Amend the budget next year early in the fiscal year because we're not gonna get everything.
When does our budget have to? Is there a timeline to use it?
Yeah, it has to be committed by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Has to be spent by December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Okay.
I, we're gonna have to spend. It's just some of the stuff is taken a little longer than expected. I was hoping. A lot of this stuff kind of wrapped up, but spent here before. It is, I have three thousand completed, so it would go towards that. Ten thousand just would be um. You know, you might not, whenever you're ready to do solar, it might have a thousand used up or. Same like or have allocated for neighbors to create a pipeline as well.
Make a motion to approve the Niocog invoiced services provided by John Robbins for the utility scale and energy ordinance and the use of American. American Rescue Plan Act armpit funds. For the amount of three hundred seventy six dollars and sixty two cents.
I'll second that. Um, there's been a motion made by supervisor Jorgensen, second by keeper to pay. Three hundred. Seventy six dollars and sixty two cents from the ARPA fund for services um regarding medium with the word of adjustment. On the tower. Uh further discussion? Any comments from anyone listening on the phone?
This is for the meeting on the tower. This is for the planning and zoning commission meeting. That was May twenty fourth.
Cute.
Yeah.
It's on the meteorological tower, not the communication seventy. Uh. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion's carried. We have another bill from Mallers and Cooney for services provided. With some carbon net proceedings. with some carbon proceeding. Floyd County's share of that total bill is two hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents. If you have all the services located in the back.
I'll make a motion to approve the ELSA County invoice. Two, two hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Kiefer, second by Jorgensen to the Mallers and Cooney, Floyd County's share of two hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents for services rendered for the pipeline proceedings from armpit funds. Any comments from anyone listening on the phone? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's carried. Item twelve. You've got a proposal for preventing maintenance contract for the HVAC system. Bills. And they've got two cooling maintenance, twelve hundred dollars labor, must be quite a little work, and fall heating maintenance. Well, they've got it all listed, uh, for fifteen hundred dollars, so.
So this is, uh, our contract with Young Plumbing is up. And so I had, Dennis and I had worked with Mills and with Mick Gage Plumbing and Heating on consideration of doing a maintenance contract. So Young, so you have, I, I didn't get anything from Mick Gage. Vic was going to quote it, but I emailed them last week to, as a reminder, and again, yesterday as a reminder. And I said that you've got to tell nine o'clock today to get something to me. I don't, I just checked my emails, they don't have anything, so they must have decided not to. Yes, so Young Plumbing has a couple of options. Their first, their current contract has, look at this page here. Their current contract has four times a year quarterly services. And we did option one, and that was for this current year, it was thirteen thousand. I don't have that number, I thought I had the number, but thirteen thousand some dollars for the year. And when, at last year, when you approved that contract, the consideration was let's do that full contract and, and then let John and Cody get. And so Young Plumbing originally quoted the same amount, the, not raising the price, the thirteen thousand dollar amount as option one. And then when talking with Mick Gage and with Kelvin from Mills, both said that they thought maybe the four times a year wasn't necessary. And they, they both, they both offered that they could work with John and Cody and make sure they know how they could do some of this work to get the cost down some. And so we asked for revised contracts. John and Cody feel good, like they could do some of that maintenance work. And so the revised options were to do, instead of four times a year, to do two times a year with option one. But then we also asked them to do this with option one has all parts and material are included. Option two has no parts or material are included. That's just on the mains, so that's the filters and the belts, that type of thing. So it seems like there's, um, there's a lot of cost in there for the belts and the filters, but there's eight units also. In talking with, um, with Kelvin, he, that, that he thinks that they, they don't know what Young Plumbing costs were, but he thinks that the cost of belts and filters would be a high dollar amount, which from what he could, could just kind of pitch rough numbers what those might cost. It's a far cry from, you know, this six thousand dollars here in this. So, um, and so Kelvin did provide his, you've got this in your package, this is Kelvin's option. And, um, I went through it with John yesterday and, um, John's biggest concern was that they, they've got very familiar with Young Plumbing person called Cass. That twenty-four seven, he's there, you know, they can call him if they need any troubleshooting issues and Cass is there. And so we did a call yesterday with Kelvin to say, um, they, in their quote here, they mentioned that they would need to have access to the computer system, which Young Plumbing has access to that now. And we asked, do we have twenty-four seven that Mills would have service? And yes, we do. They always have someone twenty-four seven on call. He said they have staff that are familiar with that computer system. Bill's pretty confident, it would be a service call, so he didn't bid a contract like this option one. This isn't just belts and filters, this is also, um, that expertise of that, those service calls as well. This one, we're, we're paying for some of those services. But he feels pretty confident that, um, service calls and whatnot would be less if we had to call up. It's going to be a mic per call option services. So those are two options that we have right now. Are going with this one for, um, the twenty-seven hundred dollars a year for the two-time services. Uh, he can check over things during those, to those inspections, he'll have for twenty-seven hundred dollars. And then have that twenty-four seven service call option. So as I said, you know, it's a little different here with the jail because it's not like, it's just the courthouse and something goes out on a Saturday night. Some things could hold off until Monday, but with jail, you've got to have your system working. He feels confident they can be able to provide those services. So it's up to you then, which one you want to go with. I like the idea of having a local contract because with Young Plumbing, we are, you know, we're fifty minutes away from someone maybe coming on site often. I like the idea of local.
I do too.
So on the bill's related proposal, says they're going to provide support to courthouse staff with training for basic maintenance activities such as changing filters, washing coils as requested.
Yeah.
Is that, this, our, our staff will be doing that, they just train them?
Uh, so of the, what's quarterly currently, two times a year, Cody and John, or as needed. Cody and John have been trained, they do know how to change filters. So instead of paying for a maintenance contract to do that, they would do that two times a year. But then we'd have Mills come and just, or whoever, Young Plumbing, the Mills come and check everything semi-annually.
All the other things are listed, yeah, okay.
Yeah. But I do know, when we had calls with the hot water heaters, Young's has done those as well. I did, uh, when I talked to him yesterday, he said, you do have it, we have three hot water heaters, but we actually only have two hot water heaters. And he said that, that, no, that's not going to change his price, it's still going to be the same price. And I didn't expect him to change the price, just. And because if you go with Mills, I would say.
Mills' total of, uh, some seven hundred dollars.
And plus it would be service calls and materials.
Right, right.
Yeah.
A motion to, uh, accept the proposals for Mills appropriated through the maintenance, preventative maintenance contract for the HVAC sys, HVAC system. Out of two thousand seven hundred dollars plus materials as needed.
I'll second the motion. Uh, we have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Kean to bills, covers, bids, uh, for my core twenty-five annual cooling maintenance of twelve hundred dollars. Of twenty-seven hundred dollars total, uh, labor only, plus that. Further discussion. Comments, anyone listening on the phone line? Uh, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 I'm abstaining.
Supervisor Kiefer abstains and motion carries. Thank you. Back to the old courtroom. Production regarding the fans.
So this one, the first page that's in your packet is just a follow-up that Bill Huey sent regarding the one phone call that he was, I had listened in on and spoke about some concerns of the unit here and this. And this is only just provided so you have it, but it has, uh, the verification, that last bullet. At this stage, a full manufacturer's analysis of this unit should be conducted prior to any remediation or being initiated. So just started with that. That has not been done, but I think we could, you know, if we got follow-through of the rest of this, I think we can maybe work through that part of it. The next part you have, just so you have it, was you had PCO number one fifty-three that you tabled action on a few meetings ago because we wanted to get bids from other vendors like Big H and Mills. So this is just in your packet as a comparison again. The next, that is, I think I did.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's in there, so I think it's on page, uh, thirty-seven.
And so this is what was provided to Bill Huey, probably even signed off prior to that before he said. Ducks under here, they're just cutting through, going into the existing ductwork, it feeds over to the room over there. So that's the, what was proposed, that was the idea originally from Jason and then from Samuel's group to do that that way. And then you have a couple of quotes. You have one from Nick Gage and one from Mills. And, uh, Mills quoted just what, same thing that was in the Samuel's group potential change order. And that's this one for fifteen hundred dollars, and that's just cutting holes through there, like was in the original contract. When Nick Gage came, he said, I don't think that's the way that you want to go. He said, I don't think that's going to allow you to get enough airflow next door. And what he suggested is in this quote, and it is putting a damper in this unit here. But then underneath that ductwork there, it's just putting a, so you could turn this on and you could close this, open or close that. If you had a full room of people and it just wasn't cooling enough, you could open that damper up. But right underneath that, you would put the same sides in that, that sidewall, this sidewall underneath that ductwork, so you're not eliminating any ductwork. So he thinks that there wouldn't be a manufacturer's concern because you're just putting that ductwork, this one you're going to have control over, that one you put over there, and that one would just flow that way. So he does not think that you should cut through there because it'll just reduce what flow you may need for here and that one. Um, I did mention it to Kelvin, I thought I was going to get something from Kelvin as well, but I, I didn't. I think in our conversation, he said it'd probably be about the same price, but I don't have anything documented of that. I talked to him yesterday, didn't think about that, I was going to think of a maintenance contract stuff.
Kelvin's with Mills?
Yes. That's the last one.
I know he asked me to give something in writing. I don't think he did.
So our, I think our, I I would recommend going with, um, Nick Gage. Take that.
My fifteen, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, well, he has fourteen ninety-eight, yeah. I think that's probably the better option, that one makes more sense to me because we're not, I can, I can see where cutting those holes out of that existing wood. Air is going to flow to the least resistant and it's going to flow down and not hit over there, so that makes sense.
Do we still need to give the manufacturer?
I, I, well, the logic with Nick Gage was you're going to just basically take the ductwork, I mean, you're going to take that ductwork out, you're going to put a damper there so you won't need that ductwork to use it. You'll just have it off unless you have a need for it in the room because you have a bunch of warm bodies in here that you need to open it up. Um, and then you open it up, it probably gets noise. Well, he thinks if you put it around that corner there, and it's, it's same-sized ductwork as what you have here that's closing up, it's just going to be shifted around the corner, then it shouldn't be any manufacturer's issue because it's the same-sized ductwork. It's, you're not, if you just relocated the duct from what was.
And he, and he thinks it reduces the noise too, that's the, that's the goal.
Yep, yep, he said it's, it's going to shift it around there, so it's not going to be right over Chum's head and that's going to be closed up, so you're not going to have noise running in there. And he said if that doesn't work, then you could, you could close that up and you still have the same ductwork on the other side. You thought you did need to close that one up. I mean, sheet rock over it. If that damper still lets noise get in here. He thinks the damper would, put in a damper in there would.
There's just the one thermostat behind you.
Yeah, there's. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Some screwing stuff.
Engage for one thousand four hundred and ninety-eight. Engage for one thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars.
That works. Projected the boardroom.
Second, alright, the motion that's been made by supervisor George, and second by keeper to accept the. Proposal for four hundred ninety-eight dollars. From Engage for work here on main air ducts and workup. Further discussion. Any comments, anyone listening on the phone line? If you're not opposed to approve the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is carried. Alright, time fifteen. Fourteen. Yeah, I think we can go ahead, we'll go ahead and finish it, I'm sure.
Just can't start.
Alright. Okay, your packet here, most age. Declarations execution of the.
So this is for the. Decat contract, and it's actually, I didn't put all of the pages. So it's actually thirty-nine pages, but I only, I didn't put all of the. This boilerplate. Stuff, it's nothing's changed from past, but that. But this is the. Contract for Decat services. Fires thirtieth, this renews that contract. It's for. We're gonna look at page six of the contract, it's for three years, eighty-four thousand dollars a year for three years. This is for the county to do the fiscal. Services for Jill McKee, is our Decat coordinator. So. So I would recommend that you continue doing this, but I will just give you. Just a little update on some of this, maybe Jill has, I don't know if Jill's talked about any of it in her board meetings, Mark or not, but. Decat. It has been on the chopping block with state legislators. And it was, they thought it was going to go away June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, but the legislation didn't act on it to drop it yet. It is going to be revisited again in the next legislative session. And so it has the potential to. Meters. It's also been talked about at the early childhood meetings. With Lori Christensen's resignation or retirement December thirty-first, and how that's going to go with potentially combining. Early childhood Iowa regions, which a neighboring region doesn't just do early childhood, they do Decat also. So there's conversations that if. How this might play out with if Decat does get dropped June of twenty twenty-five. So that's just an unknown with it, but the contract does allow that if it is dropped, there's a, a get out. And we're not obligated to continue services by any means if it goes by the wayside by per legislation.
So this is three-year contract, is this the third year of the three-year?
This first year will start July first. And was a six-year contract. End of its sixth year. This year, thirtieth, so it's a new, brand-new three-year contract with D. We get. Five percent of the. Get ten percent. Of the expenses on this contract as being this going on. Made about eight thousand dollars. Well, it goes for all the expenses for her wages and whatnot, but we did. Managing. Her, being the employer of record. We get, she's our employee. Through that contract, it pays for her wages, her health insurance, but then she goes out and with a bigger pot of de categorized funds from. Health human services. Multiple grants are issued. For filling gaps of services in our Floyd Mitchell Chivasaw region area.
Alright, any other questions regarding this amendment to the contract?
Now the entertainment motion to approve. A motion to approve the contract declarations and execution through Decat coordination services, you mean amount? Eighty-four thousand.
You can, well, it's eighty-four thousand for three, it's a three-year contract.
For the three-year contract.
Second, alright, there's a motion made by supervisor George, and second by keeper to approve the. Three-year contract for. Execution for Decat coordination services. Favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, the review actually during the third amendment to the committee, should be protecting children contract.
This one. It's just a one-pager. It's just. Said Decat run that, I think that's three, I don't know if it's coming up, six, I have to move back, but. This one is a six-year contract, and each year. It's amended to continue for another year. And. So this is the third amendment, so it would be the fourth year of the six-year contract. It's just saying we're going to keep. That contract in place, Jill McKee, Decat coordinator, is also the CPBC coordinator. They work on community events like National Night Out. Child safety type things, like they provide. Bicycle helmets to different organizations and. Cool floaty things and theater. Promotions for kids' activities and. Just to promote child safety and. Engagement.
I will make a motion to approve the third amendment to the community partnership protecting children contract. Second, alright, I have a motion by supervisor Kiefer, second by George, to approve the third amendment. The community partnership protecting children contract, further discussion. Comments, anyone listening on the phone? If you're not opposed, approve the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, this next one is appropriation change, would increase the amount that originally appropriated ninety percent to a hundred percent. For county government assistance department ninety-seven.
So this is the department that. Your rural service taxes collected go into this rural services department ninety-seven. And then this is what, at the end of each year, you transfer that to secondary roads. The budgeted amount is what's the minimum required, and so without putting this at a hundred percent, we wouldn't be able to give. Secondary roads their appropriate allocation. So this is the only one at this time, when I looked at your budgets, that looks like we need to go to the ninety-seven percent, or from ninety-seven to a hundred. You know, when you get your information from Lexi, there's that, the last page that shows where the budgets are at with, if it were a hundred percent or. Excuse me, and so this, this one just has to be, I should have caught it on the last one, but didn't even realize until after we had the last appropriation up to a hundred percent. So at a future meeting, probably next Monday's meeting, we'll have you do that transfer for those funds. I got a little overzealous with putting the agenda together here, I had, Mark, I had a, a full, I had all those transfers and stuff on here, you guys would be here till midnight, I think, a lot of kept stuff on there, but. So those will be at a future meeting to do appropriate over details.
A motion regarding resolution number fourteen dash twenty-four appropriation changes ninety percent to a hundred percent for fiscal year. Two thousand twenty-four, department ninety-seven, hundred percent appropriation.
Alright, there's a motion made by supervisor George, and second by keeper to approve resolution fourteen twenty-four appropriations change to ninety to a hundred percent. Further discussion. I refer you color all.
George.
Aye.
Keeper.
Aye.
Q.
Aye. Resolution fourteen twenty-four, I have it approved. Note the twenty twenty-four county auditor election certification. Let's see, we need to, we take this, just note this, and then. Call this meeting and get into our canvassing later.
Yes, so this is, and this is not part of the canvas, this is just a requirement, but changed two years ago with having a audit of. A hand count compared to a machine count from election night. So we have our absentee team came in on Thursday, and they randomly were notified the day after the election. What precinct and what race is hand counted on a ballot, this one happened to be the courthouse CC one precinct. With the first, Ashley Jensen. Well, actually, first race on all the ballots, so all Democrat, Republican, and Libertarian ballots were reviewed, and. We've been doing these audits for several years now, it used to be that you only had to do them on federal elections, and then. Two years ago, the legislation changed that it needs to be done on every single election, and so whether it's a special or a. City school election, it's done every election, and I'm just happy to report that we have a hundred percent accuracy again, every single time, we have had a hundred percent accuracy comparing the hand count to the machine count.
Excellent.
Yep. There to kind of diffuse some of the negative stuff that comes out about bad tabulating devices and fraudulent stuff, because this is, to me, this should. Put confidence in Iowa's elections anyway, in the systems that Iowa has allowed to use to tabulate.
This is the first time you used new machines, right?
This is, the first time on the new equipment also, yeah, and the new equipment worked very well. And there's nicer, bigger screens, but it worked very well.
Alright. The post selection audit report is due another. Item eighteen, future agenda items.
You have some things? Art Balrose is gonna try to get next Monday to do a review of the fiscal year twenty-four insurance. And provide information on fiscal year twenty-five renewal. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we've got all sorts of transfers to do for conservation, reserve. To diversity management and to secretary votes. That, and then I was wondering if you might consider. I get a little nervous when we have a payroll after a claim run. And so the way the calendar falls, June twenty-fourth would be our Monday meeting, but we have a payroll June twenty-eighth. And if any department has been so close with claims that they run through, there wouldn't be a meeting to. Consider, let's say, a special meeting to. You can do a shift of up to five thousand dollars without bending your budget, and so I, in the past, I've asked for to, when we run into that kind of thing. If we can maybe move that meeting to the last day of the month, and so I don't know if you would want to consider doing a Friday meeting on the twenty-eighth. And then since the next week is a short week with the holiday, not having another meeting until tomorrow. Not having a meeting on the twenty-fourth.
June twenty-eight?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you don't have to decide now, up in the chair can set that, that's just one of the. Even if you want, what time?
On ten o'clock.
Ten, even if you wanted to do it later in the day, consider that, I do have a conference Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it ends, it's in Duane at hands, I. Usually get out, it goes till noon, but we usually are out earlier, I could just leave earlier, if you wanted to do it in the afternoon, I'd be back from Duane.
That's the only thing I have, those meetings, the two-hour attention has. Actually. Intensified. And I almost. Feel the need to be there, but I also, I understand your, your request, I, you know, I answer.
If it was like a three o'clock meeting, you could do that.
It's probably an hour downtown door, I'm for sure, last time it took me longer to do it, road closures, storms, but. Yeah, we could shoot for three, and if I had to, I'd leave at two. Or one thirty, yeah.
You can think about it. And crisis, I mentioned, I've not heard a name from that. Scared she was gonna get us what their rate is currently, I haven't heard anything. Said to put that off.
Yeah, the random. Got any comparison?
And then also look at resolution for, that if you ask to put on.
Yeah. Yeah, she would ask for that resolution regarding utility board authority to use evidence to make the pipeline. And so you can take that up to next.
The date's uncertain. Is it, is there another option, just having handwritten plans?
Uh.
Have a handwritten plan?
There is, but not if they're over there. If we need to do that five, up to five thousand dollar shift. And actually looking at the department, still, I think that. Would have you watch really close is department ten. Or house department. Contracts that are coming up are. But, you know, whatever, we'll. We'll make it.
Right now, we're trying to plan on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, we decided. I, I think. That's all a request, you know, I. Nice to be in. So there's a couple options.
Okay, I guess to be determined later on.
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items?
I don't have any.
All right. By the 19, during this meeting. Most agenda.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Kiefer, second by Jorgensen to adjourn. Those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At our canvas. Primary life.
Okay. Here is the Okay, so we've got a lot of, you got this much paperwork in your emails. Other canvas. Ultimately, we'll approve a resolution. And this, so in your package, I'll just hand these out however you want to spread these around, but these two documents are what was
Okay, we need to approve the It's now 10:31 and first item on the canvas of the June 4 primary election is to approve the agenda.
Also moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Kiefer to approve the agenda. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now the canvas to write the results.
So what you got received in your email unofficial, unofficial results. This one is a short sweep report that just shows the totals, combined precinct totals from election night. I'm just going to pass these around however you want it to come. This one's the big one that was sent to you and this breaks it down by polling place for each race. And so we'll pass this around to you. We had no additional, we had one UOCBA ballot that wasn't returned. And so they would have had until noon yesterday to, for us to receive that if they voted it on later than Monday and got it back to us. Those, because the person wasn't in an imminent domain danger area, they were able to, their militaries, they were able to get the ballot mail to them, or excuse me, emailed. Voted, but they have to mail it back to us. But we, we didn't get that ballot back. So no changes. So on this report, the one thing they want to know, and I don't know if any of you looked over that resolution, but you'll see one difference in your numbers here and it's in the resolution that explains it. But you can see that there were three, that there were 383 ballots cast. But if you look at your resolution, there's 382 voters. In one of our precincts, a spoiled ballot got put in the scanner instead of in the spoiled envelope and the voter was issued another ballot. So one voter did vote twice. There was an error at the precinct that they
382 would be the correct.
382 is the correct number of voters, but 383, they said, you know, can we get that ballot back out? And I said, no, you can't open that ballot box. You wouldn't know which ballot because they don't fall in and order or anything. And there's no way you can do that. It's a counted ballot. It's a tabulating device and, and that precinct, all those ballots were accounted for. And they, we did get, I got a written report on what occurred, how it occurred. And so that's in our records and it's, it was just a slip by the precinct election officials in this election. It didn't change any results. I think this is probably the lowest count of primary election turnout that I have seen in my most 20 years of elections. Very extremely low turnout. And it costs still significant. Yeah. So that's your unofficial reports there. And then your official reports. I have two canvases for you to sign. But the numbers match. So if you want to look at one of those, they're same numbers. It's just one's on a state report, one is on our system that's used or data, our software that's used for election night. And then those all look good. These are two sets of abstracts for you to sign. So you don't declare anything for any of the races that are across counties. The only thing you are approving is nominations of our local people who won the election. So there's two sets of those. I think those should match up with everything. So your candidates that you're declaring as nominated for the the general election in November are on the Democratic ballot Liz Hamm for county auditor and Todd Pritchard for county attorney vacancy. And on the Republican ballot, Boyd Campbell for district three supervisor and Oregon Miller for auditor. You see lots of scattering on the resolution and on those reports. There needs to be a
Do the names on the write-ins?
There were write-ins. Here's the list of write-ins, but nothing is, meets the threshold to report names on the reports. And so they're all reported as scattering. Ken, are you on the phone by chance? I forgot to bring the tally books down if you want to pull the individual slips from a precinct. That's the write-ins. Write-ins, so somebody wrote someone in, but it doesn't meet the threshold to report. If there's no one on the ballot, like say, for example, Supervisor District One, Democrat or Republican or Libertarian, there's no one on the ballot. So what you have to do is you have to go back to the previous election where there was someone on the ballot and then they have to get 35% of the votes in order to There really was even a lot of write-ins. There's a couple of the silly ones like ours. There's the write-ins if you want to see those. And that was emailed in the first attachment that you received yesterday. Hey, Jen, I forgot to bring the tally books down. Can you bring those down for us? Thanks. Then we also have to provide to the parties offices where there were no candidates to pass on to the general election. So that's what then needs to be signed. And
TFP attorney, TFP.
To fill vacancies.
Okay.
These are the same thing as well, just two sets of no candidates.
This is the old line for, oh, you gotta leave that blank.
Where?
Where it says seal. That line blank, right?
No.
Oh, you just
That's where Yeah.
Do we each have to send these or?
No, there's two sets of abstracts. There's two sets of the canvas page. It's only the cover sheet they have to sign on the canvas page. And there's two sets of the no candidates. And then the I just need to bring those tally books down if you want to pull a tape out from any precinct and compare it to that report.
All right, shall we consider the resolution? It's 15-24.
You can see in that resolution where I did put about the discrepancy in the number of voters and the number of ballots issued at the precinct.
What precinct was it?
It was, they somehow they just thought with this new equipment, that that new equipment would spoil that ballot.
Yes.
They spoiled it in their check-in process like they're supposed to, but they really thought that that was going to communicate to the equipment, standalone equipment, and that that ballot would count.
Well, it's good with one spoiled ballot, I guess. It's a good for the primary.
Yeah.
Good learning.
All right, here's tapes in here. That's what we need is through the envelopes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need a motion to approve the resolution. Airs it.
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution that 15-24 certification of Floyd County election results June 4, 2024, primary election.
All right, I have a motion by Supervisor Kiefer to approve resolution 15-24 certifying the Floyd County election, primary election results. Out of recovery, you call the roll.
Yes.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Aye. Now, resolution 15-24. Your motion adjourned and start signing. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Kiefer to adjourn. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.